Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Mayfield Board of Commissioners, Thursday, seven, Thursday, March the twenty seventh, special meeting. We will begin with the implications of Chief Palmer.
That's great. Heavenly Father, thank you again for another beautiful day. We can tell spring is upon us. We've come together looking for your blessings as we gather as a city and as a community to discuss topics which usually are very hard and very hard decisions to make. We look for your guidance, we look for your obedience, and we ask you to make us stronger today than we were yesterday. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Rogue Paul, please.
Commissioner Grahamer.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Mayor Conneral.
Yes ma'am.
City Manager Wallingford.
Here.
Project Corridor Hood.
Here.
Public Works Director King.
Here.
Police Chief Palmer.
Here.
Fire Chief Carpenter.
Here.
Utility Manager Spats.
Here.
City Manager?
Mayor Commissioners, what I'd like to do today is just briefly go over capital requests from basically the big five departments, which would be Engineering, Police, Fire, Utilities, and Public Works. And then, once they get done giving you an overview of their, what they're looking at, I'll give you a brief overview of some of the numbers right now, and then, we'll decide how we want to proceed moving forward. So with that, Chief Palmer, would you like to go over your stuff?
Sure, and first off, again, thank you, as I presented at the last commission meeting, allow me to rearrange that line item, because again, at this point in time, I don't have a rear end seat. I hope, I hope to talk to you at the next council meeting with at least two of the four of them. With that being said, again, we pushed off the vehicles and so I put them back on for this budget year, which it should work out fine, and it should be good, because we are working with vehicles that are just, they just tend to replace. So, the cost is about pretty much the same. I've spoke with Tim Mountcamp, who's over the vehicles. You know, it's about fifteen thousand per unit to outfit with lights and all that kind of stuff, but the costs on the vehicles are about the same, because we're looking at twenty-five models, so we won't be looking at twenty-six models. But I'll jump down to item four, which is the MDT tablets, which we're having to upgrade them. And part of the monies that I reallocated from this year's budget will go to buy X amount of tablets, which will, that number of seventy-two thousand, it might change, because it might be even less than that to purchase them for this year. And then, the Cell Bright is our service that we use for investigations for downloading phones, and we use it pretty consistently and is open, you know, we help with additional counties and stuff like that with it as well. So that is pretty much my capital items that I'm looking for for this year.
How many cars are you looking at now?
Just two.
Two.
Yes ma'am, to kind of keep up with, it should rotate us out, and you know, skim of the year, we can make new. But just getting some of the older vehicles in, I was talking with individuals the other day, when you get to some of these older vehicles, your cost of upkeep is almost the cost of a new vehicle. So, you know, it's unfortunate that I'm four short, but going forward, I look to hopefully have the bodies to put into by next year.
Good.
But they can work on the Durangos here, Canton.
Yes, sir. Sir.
It was twenty-twenty-six model?
It was twenty-twenty-five.
All right, Dave, I'm gonna run and get Anne's mail from her mailbox, so she has that information.
Okay. Oh, here, 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 Mayor, let me do it while they're, while they're still talking. When Chief gets done, you go ahead.
I'll grab it, but they're twenty-twenty-five is what Paul got, got looking at.
He had twenty-twenty-three out here, that's all.
Is that what it was? Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's a typo of mine, that's my apologies.
That Cell Bright, is that forty thousand dollars every year?
Yes, it is. We got a grant for it, you know, it's a great investigative tool, I mean, we.
Got you, got you.
It's, it's a good tool.
You got a grant for that?
For the year before, this year, this year we weren't able to get a grant on it.
Thanks. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you, brother.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Carpenter?
This is the packet I gave him, it's pretty simple. Of course, you all know, we ordered a new engine. It is supposed, quotation supposed, to be ready in the spring slash summer of two thousand twenty-six. So, we need to have that money allocated for that, for when it shows up. That may be something that be, be the next budget, but we need to have it ready for this budget. And also, the same kind of parentheses with our boat, so.
I don't have your.
It should be one in your mailbox. If not, here, I'll just go with the next.
Okay.
And so, and you, we've already went through that, did that process, and the only thing I'm gonna add with that is equipment for the new engine. A lot of the equipment we have on this engine actually has Engine Six written on it. I don't know how many of y'all remember Engine Six, but it was the old Matt Cabover, I think it was a sixty-eight. That was, that equipment was bought new and set long enough. So, I'm kind of upgrading that equipment, and also, that would put, make us have three fully stock pumper's, and that would help with ISO ratings, you know, with ISO, that makes insurance cheaper for everybody in City Mayfield, so. And that, with the cost of that equipment, I'm asking for a hundred fifty thousand. And if you look at that packet, if you go to the end, the main number, it says one six, a hundred sixty-one thousand, but I think I can get the prices down on a lot of that stuff, and get it down to about a hundred fifty with shopping.
That's all the equipment that we need to go on to the bumper?
The truck.
Okay.
And a little bit of hazmat equipment, that's stuff that's been outdated. I had to use a level A hazmat suit, we used one the other day, that was probably ten years outdated, but it was still good working on there, so. And that incident dealt with, but we need to just kind of update a little bit of that equipment also, so. And that's all I'm asking.
Would you hang on to that equipment, or would you try to surplus it or?
The older equipment, it'd actually go on like the third backup pumper. And it's, some of the equipment's still usable, it's just, it's starting to nickel and bond, if that makes sense. So updating, like, something as little as a fitting, or something as big as like your axes and your halogens and stuff. So, we've had a couple axes and stuff break here, they're just getting old and wore out. And even made of fiberglass, you give it, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years on it, it's gonna start to wear away and start to fail, so. It can be used in a pinch, but we're pretty much either surplus or put it on the backup backup pumper, so.
Just out of curiosity, what's in a railroad car emergency kit?
It's a kit that, like, if you have a railroad emergency, like a wreck, it can stop spills. It's kind of like a spill patch and different idols, it's a big kit made just for railroads. And as, you got a railroad that goes right through the middle of a town. And if you want to be entertained, download an ERG book and look at the numbers that are going through the middle of a town, and what kind of materials are going there, might scare you a little bit, but.
I can see my memory.
Yeah, so, we're just trying to be more responsible with emergencies like that, with what happened up in Ohio, what was that, two years ago? And just working with EKP and.
New piles up.
Yeah, and if you looked at the bottom of the front page, also, what we're gonna be asking for next year, because I think if you have advanced notice in kind of what we're planning for, you can see that it's gonna be about that time to put in for new angles, because angles are taking about two years now to make. So, it's down, to start thinking ahead, so I'm gonna ask for new angles next year, and it's time to start looking at our staffing, because our angles runs are going up. And we're, our mind guns are getting tired. We are almost to the forty-three hundred to five thousand mark a year on angles runs. We went to eight, we were like at thirty-five, so they have not been down at all. So, hopefully, with some changes, enter local agreements and stuff, we can maybe up our staffing, so. That's kind of my plan for even the next budget year, so it's tough to look forward to.
Chief, when you say equipment for boat, would that also possibly be a building as well, or?
Yeah, yeah. So, the equipment for boat, there is a, the Port Security Grant that got the boat on was supposed to open up a month ago, but as we know, the federal government, what they're going through, we're still waiting. So, I will still try to get a grant for that stuff, but I'll also put on the next year budget differently, so.
What will you keep, if, when are we supposed to get them, did you say?
Which one?
The boat.
The boat is supposed to be spring, summer of two thousand twenty-six, so it could be this budget, it could be the next one. So, we're just gonna anticipate this budget and move forward afterwards. Any questions? Pretty soon.
Thanks, Chief. Dave?
Okay, I guess everybody's got a copy of it, of mine too. That top one there, the generator contract, that's basically, we sometimes have included that in building maintenance, but really, that generator contract with maintenance on everybody's, fire department, police departments, our communication towers, utility commission, all the generators, we have them serviced twice a year, plus, there's always something that goes wrong, so I put that in there, that's a contract we do every year. The generation, generator at Fire Station Two, that's kind of, we never have put one in out there at the training facility. That's something that I'm kind of looking to trying to do this year. Or not Station Two, this is that, yeah, it's Station Two.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah. It's on Kenton Station Road. We haven't, never had one out there, and I think, you know, that's something that we probably need to look at doing out there on top of the hill. Public Works Two, an emergency management roof, that's something, the middle section of that, that's where the EOS is, you know, ELC is, and we've had trouble with that roof for, since, about since we've got the building, and we've put this off for two or three years, and it's something that we probably need to get done as soon as we can. He's got a lot of equipment in there. The Kenton Commonwealth Building, that's for a new unit up on the roof, which we replaced four of them when we did our energy efficiency thing, and this is one that was newer, but now it's older now, so, and it's failing us. West Third Street, that's something I try to put in every year with retaining walls, things like that, we have problems up there, so. That's just an ongoing thing. Garage doors, Public Works Two, which is out where Buffalo Trace Search and Rescue, that's where the back doors of that are, they're all glass, we've replaced all the other ones out there except these, and they're very, when you raise them, it's just kind of a dangerous situation, and we're, I want to try to get those taken care of this year, if we do that roof and everything, I may be able to put all that in together. Handicap sidewalk repairs, that's something we do every year, try to put something in the budget for it. Limestone Creek Pump Station, rebuild, pump number one. Basically, once we get that done, we'll have them all done. So, that's kind of what we're looking at doing is, and the reports that came back was those pumps are not, weren't all pumping at the correct efficiency. So, us getting these done are probably more important than putting that line to the river at the time. So, once I get that done though, we'll have them all done, then, then we'll have a backup, and we can focus on putting that to the river, you know, so that's kind of where we're at with that. Seal and Stripe Maple Leaf Road Trail, that was something we talked about last year, we didn't get to it. I don't think the state's gonna do it, we talked to them about it. That's a track out by the YMCA, now connects to our Boys and Girls Club, one that we did, so that's something that we, it's gonna be a maintenance problem if we don't go on and try to do something with it. Asphalt patching and repair, that's just a normal yearly thing, got fifty thousand in there, really need that, probably need more, but we'll see how the road funds go this year with the tax and things. Fire Training Building, again, that's out there at Kyle's place, pave and seal, and there's some concrete work around the doors. We had new doors put in there last year that's part of a grant that Kevin had got, and we had the doors put in, but we didn't do the concrete work out back, and that needs to be done with a seal coat of the asphalt, because it's in pretty bad shape in the back there. Cox Building, HVAC work, again, we're having, you know, it's twelve, thirteen years, things are going bad down there. That's another unit we need to replace. Flood walls falling and repair work, we've been trying to do this every year. We've been putting some of that in flood wall maintenance, but Joseph wanted me to do a separate line item for this, so. And I think it's probably a good idea, because that way, we're not getting into each other's maintenance stuff, so. And we're repairing the top, and that's something that we've been nicked on with the reports that we do, that that's something that they wanted us to keep on doing. And once we stay in that, you know, the, the risk range, and we're never gonna be perfect on that flood wall, it's too old, but this keeps us being able to be available for funding and get money, just like we did four years ago with that seven million dollar project. And there's more coming up this year, they said. Parking, parking lot under Simon Kenton Bridge, that's trying to fix all that, that's down there across from the, our parking lot across from the Health Department, where it's gravel down there and going into the Ledger Independent Lot, we can pick up several more spaces, and we need to do some work on that lot. It's, needs some repair, needs striping, needs, you know, just generally to look a little better. So that's what, because we own all that right up to the railroad, basically, the city does. So, that could be a lot of more valuable parking down there for things that we got going on. Cox Building Windows, first and third floor, I think the first floor, everybody thinks those windows aren't clean down there. Well, they're old, and that's the way that old glass looks. That's repairing, replacing those two, there's two windows down there, and then some on the third floor are rotted real bad. There's, the weather has got to them, and we're gonna try to go back and replace those with efficient, more efficient windows, you know. I can't do them all at once, this'll just be a few, you know, probably five windows, you know, maybe a few more, I don't know. Camera system, that's something we talked about with the police department. Did you put that, you didn't put that in your bucket? It's about getting a citywide camera system, where basically, we can configure all the cameras we've got and put them on one large screen projector or TV.
We've got a grant here for it, that we didn't, I didn't include in it.
Yeah, or over at the police department, so that's kind of what we're looking at, because we always seem to have problems when we have issues with, whether it's vandalism, or the police need them, or Luke needs them, or. We either run out of space on our cameras, or it's, it wasn't backed up, or camera was out, or, so. But we got a price, and that's what, that's what it is. And it's, it's probably a hundred cameras, that's what we've got. Bathrooms, you know, everything. Then the other sheet there is my, the grants and stuff that's going on, which you all, the Boys and Girls Club Trail basically is done. The rest of it's, you know, the asphalt, that's my contract for this year, that asphalt overlay contract. That's what the price was, if we don't get the money for it, I'll do what, if it's only a hundred and ninety thousand, that's what we'll try to do, you know. Basically, with this, I've got, I'm gonna be able to do half of Jersey Ridge Road and the rest of the, and there's a few other roads.
Just to remind you, we do have, from the old discretionary fund that used to be at the state, it's now the county emergency fund, but includes cities. We do have an application in to get funding to do Jersey Ridge.
And that's what we did with Washington Glen last year, which worked out, we've done it the past three years.
About three or three years?
Done some roads down, I mean, it's worked out pretty good, and if I can get Jersey Ridge, then I can back up and do a bunch, because that's, that would take all of that.
Yeah.
To do Jer, to do the whole thing, you know. I just, and I know people are gonna be upset about it, but I, we'll just have, I'm gonna try to do the worst half, and then, if we don't get that other money. The Flap Grant, we're working on it, Strand Engineering, we're in the, they're down here today doing some work on it. Environmental work, Tap Grant sidewalks, we're deep into that, you know, with, with them getting to work on that. Probably, construction could begin late summer, fall, is that what they said? Maybe winter, early winter, it just depends.
I'd say we're probably looking more at spring of twenty-six.
Trouble with it is environmental stuff, when you're dealing with the state and federal stuff, it just takes forever. It's not the stuff we're holding up. Rec Park.
How would the environmental come in to replace any existing sidewalk?
Because you've, how, how old's your house?
Oh.
See, I gotta take a pic, that's another thing.
You gotta take a picture.
I've gotta get a picture of every house, and which we've started.
Yeah.
And anything that's fifty years old or older is historical, and then they gotta come in and do all their, whether you're, you're digging, if you're pulling, unless you can pull that sidewalk up without disturbing any dirt.
Did you have to do that on the east end?
Oh, yeah.
On the west end?
Yeah, so, we've got maybe seven structures that are fifty year, you know, less, that were like Hardymans, you know, ones that were just put up. So it's, yeah. The Rec Park Fitness Trail, we've got some progress on it here lately, looks like that's move, that's gonna, that's moving along. And then, the Watershed Management Grant, of course, that's a full grant, so, but we're working on all that, so. Basically, green sinks, but you don't wanna call them that now. There's been a new administration, you don't.
Any questions for David?
Call it Watershed Manage, but that's it, on my.
Thank you, sir. Luke?
Alrighty, so, if you notice there beside each item, I've put a number, and that's just to prioritize really what we're, like, really needing, that we have to replace. And then, I put a one beside it, three would be something that we definitely would need, but, you know, could wait, so. So, the first item there, chipper combo unit, sixty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. We have currently two chipper trucks and two chippers. They're both standard shift chipper trucks. One of the chipper trucks within the, within a probably a year and a half, it's had two transmission replacements, and that's around six to seven thousand dollars each, and it's had two, so.
What transmission?
I'm not exactly sure what transmission.
Is it automatic or stick? No, it's a standard.
Stand, standard shift.
Okay, is it GMC or Chevrolet?
It's, yeah, I think it's a Ford.
No, I can't help you.
But, so, they are, they're having issues, so, an automatic would be awesome, but we'll see. So, the chipper combo unit is an actual trailer with a chipper on the back and a hopper. So you don't have to have, you can take an existing truck that you already got, hook it to the back of it, and roll on. You wouldn't have to buy both, so. Next item is a zero-turn mower, ten thousand to fifteen thousand. We previously just put one out of service, so that would just be to replace the other one that we've already put out of service. The next item there is painting all three floors the one stop. And I have twenty-eight thousand for that. That would be all the offices, the entryways, hallways, custodial closet, it's all that stuff, so getting all that stuff painted. Next item there, add three more employees, and that number there, three hundred and fifteen thousand, that is, if we add the numbers up, paying each employee eighteen dollars an hour, plus their benefits. So that's complete everything that we would be paying them, and that's three employees. Next item there is trash cans and picnic tables. Matt and I talked about putting this in there, that would be, I think, I think it was five each, right? Five per, five picnic, five trash cans?
Yes.
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
So, that'd be ten thousand dollars, I've already got a quote on that.
The trash cans for down on the avenue, and picnic tables under the pavilion at the King Park.
So we're talking about similar trash cans that are on South Street?
Yes, yes.
They on Forest Avenue?
Yep, exactly.
The max? Same ones, yep.
Yep, so. Next one here is two new snow plows, nine thousand dollars each. We assessed our equipment with the snow plows and snow equipment, and we've got two plows that currently go on our plow trucks, that you've got the cutting edge, above the cutting edge is, you know, the actual blade. It's rusted with holes in both, both of those, so you've got stuff blowing through it. So that's why we've asked to replace those two, nine thousand dollars each. Salt spreader for the side-by-side. So we've got a plow for it already, and we actually used that thing a lot this past winter, and it did really, really well. We just didn't have a salt spreader for it. They make one like the ones we have on our snow plow trucks, our big trucks, and it is six thousand dollars. Next item there, and I put this, this one in there for y'all to just to choose which one you think is, you know, best, because we can work with either one of them, but chipper truck with hopper. Our current chipper truck that we have, one of the ones that we have, the chipper truck, like I said, we've changed two transmissions in it in two years or so, a year and a half. The chipper is technically blown up, but it still runs, and we're using it. So, that is buying a chipper truck, which would be an automatic, and then buying a chipper to pull behind it. And that would be two thou, two hundred thousand, it'd be a hundred thousand each. And there, I, I gave us a little padded room with that price. They're around, I would say eighty to ninety-five each, so. So that one is there. The next item is a telehandler. So telehandler with the basket, seventy-nine thousand, and that's for the flood wall. We've been renting one, we have to rent one to put the limestone landing closure in, so we can get the braces up.
Well, I was gonna say, tell them what other uses you, and why, because of the, the van, the boom truck, and what condition they're in.
So, we sold our van, we surplus that van, and that was to, we had to, we have a boom truck and a van. The van was putting up banners, putting up flowers, all that kind of stuff, we use it a lot. So, what we would think about, you know, doing if we got this telehandler, put a basket on it, which, you know, they're rated for, and then use that downtown to hang flowers, hang banners, light pole fixtures, anything like that, we can use it for it.
How, how, how far up would it go?
They vary, but, you know, you can get on twenty to forty-five.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking, you've always had to rent one to, to do the Cox Building, some of the stuff there.
Yeah, we still would on, no bigger than that one, I bet.
That'd be a smaller one, okay.
It, it would be a smaller one, but other uses, we have to put the docks in the water here at the landing and the boat dock. We're currently using the Bico. It's probably not the, the greatest thing to do, you know, because if we do have something slip up, we're gonna be in the water. But the, the telehandler, what it is, it's a four-wheel drive machine, it's got a cab for someone to sit in, and then it's got like a boom arm, and you can put forks on it, you can put a bucket on it, you can put a basket in it, and it like telescopes out and then back in. So you can be, you know, farther away from the water and put this stuff down in there. And like I said, they make them various lengths, you can probably get one like sixty feet, so, pretty, pretty good reach. But that is why we put that one in there. I think that's about, I mean, we can come up with various jobs to use that thing on, trimming trees, taking trees down, you know, all kinds of stuff like that. But that would prevent us from having to buy another boom truck or boom van, because we could just use it too. So it's just got a lot of uses there for that one. I put in two seasonal labors. So right now, my seasonal labor budget is sixty-three thousand. What I'm wanting to do is up it to ninety-three thousand, and that gives me room to hire two more seasonal employees. Usually, we're hiring students around April, and they stay till around November, December. So we've needed a lot more help here recently, so I put two more in there. Um, so we've needed a lot more help here recently, so I put two more in there. Next one there, uh, zero turn for the flats of the flood wall. Um, right now we have the slope mowers, which have helped us tremendously with slopes. Um, we have two older s- slope mowers and then one slope mower we can use, um, pretty much on the slope or the flat. That machine, the last machine is about on its last leg. Um, so we're looking for something. We just took on the Beechwood Park mowing and weeding yet, so now we're responsible for that and it's around five acres. Um, then we're responsible for the flood wall, then once the trail comes in, we'll be, you know, mowing on each side of the trail and things like that. So it's just something that we can mow with on flat ground that isn't made for a slope. Um, so it'd just be a regular zero go turn or one with the bat wings. So it'd be really wide. You got a question?
Beechwood, who, who, who did it before?
Wise Creek.
Right.
Yeah, they're no longer doing that, so we're gonna have to take it over. Um, and like, it's somewhere, somewhere around five acres or so. Um, but it helps us too with our other flat areas. Um, you know, we're losing one probably, but it helps us a, a lot with other flat ground.
And on that, they're gonna give a donation to Public Works, I think, in the amount of two thousand dollars. So, nice gesture. They own the building and the, and what the building sits on, we own everything else around it, yeah.
Alrighty, and that was, we budgeted thirty-seven thousand and that was for, um, a zero turn that has the bat wing. Um, you know. So, next item there is three use pickup trucks. Um, I put in for twenty-five hundred, uh, HD and thirty thousand each. We've got currently two trucks that are, they're drivable, safe for the road. But there's not anything that you're gonna be able to, you're not gonna wanna pull something with them, you're not gonna wanna put, you know, a lot of weight in the back of the truck cause they're extremely rested. Um, if you look up under one of the trucks, the receiver hitch where you, you would hook your trailer, it's almost completely rotted off the truck. So, um, just something that we need to definitely look at replacing soon. Um, it's, it's one we've had for a while, um, it's a diesel. I think it's got over two hundred thousand miles on it, but, um, anyway, just not in the best shape, um, structurally. So, three trucks there, um, thirty thousand each. Another item there we've got is haz- hazmat storage. So we put forty thousand in, we put it in our budget last year, but we ended up needing a sweeper worse than we needed these cabinets. Um, so that's what we spent that money on last year. We put forty thousand in, um, these storage cabinets would store aerosol cans, um, anything combustible or flammable, um, in this cabinet. So we put it in there, store it, that way if anything were to happen, it's not gonna, you know, catch on fire or explode. Next item is a V ditch bucket for our excavator. Um, you can see there I've got it listed as the last on priority. Um, but sixty-five hundred dollars would get us one of those. And we've, we've got a project, just for example, right now we're working on, we're replacing a culvert pipe going into someone's entryway. Um, so we've got a ditch from his entryway to, um, pretty much down to the next person's driveway. Um, to do that, we're just doing it with our regular bucket or a skid steer. This one's sloped like a ditch, so you just pull that dirt and it kinda does the work for you. But anyway, sixty-five hundred bucks for that and it'll attach to our existing excavator. Next item, uh, snow plow box for the skid steer, five thousand dollars. Um, definitely would be something we need. Um, we've got parking lots, um, even our city building parking lots, parking lots for public parking, you know, things like that. It would be handy to get something like that down here to scrape off snow and things. Um. Next item, and this one has a little bit of, uh, explaining with it too, skid steer with tracks. Currently, we have a skid steer that we bought. It's been a little over two years ago. Um, so that skid steer, the Rec Park has put in for a skid steer on their budget. That skid steer, we had talked with Mike about transferring to them. And then we would need another one, so he wouldn't have to buy one. Um, so he would take the one we have and then we would buy one with tracks because honestly, the tire machine probably wasn't the best route. Um, just because we are in some spots where we could get stuck. I guess that's what I would say. So even with, with helping Darren and stuff out, um, one with tracks, you don't have to worry about where you're taking it, you know, it's gonna go.
Rubber tracks or steel?
Rubber.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's just, that's an option we put in there, I've got it listed as the second on priority. If that were to happen and, you know, Mike's got it in his budget to, to get one. Um, so if that were to happen, we could transfer ours to him and then us get another one. Um, but that's totally up to you all. Last item there.
Do the money in Mike's budget that he budgeted for.
So.
So I'll answer that, I mean, in my opinion, um, it should be split with accounting.
Yeah.
Cause they may have to budget and then at some point we can just swap.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's my feeling.
I agree.
But we're, you know, we'll discuss that probably in another week or two when, when I get the Rec Park Committee together.
That'd be an interesting conversation to have.
I got some Portland here.
So I had sixty in for that one, I've already quoted it, that's what it'd take to buy one with, uh, tracks, the size we would need, uh, sixty thousand. Last item there is a dump truck, we put it in our budget last year, that, that was another one we, um, X'd off to buy the sweeper. So dump truck, twenty-six thousand pound rating, non-CDL, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so that's what it would take to buy a new one. And then I've got my totals down there, um, for each priority, so. And then a total of everything combined. Thank you.
Darren?
Uh, I'll start off with the water plant. Uh, the first thing we got is granularly activated carbon installation, which is called short for GAC. Everybody has heard about the P FOS and we have had sampling, and of course we're over the maximum contaminant levels. Um, right now it, the last cost I got was somewhere between one to three million dollars. Well, I got some good news, I got, uh, heard from the state and there may be a possible way where we can get this paid for. We gotta be in compliance by October two thousand twenty-seven. Filter wall, filter has a bad br- uh, leak in it, bad crack. And it's right between, what was it I called that?
That area?
It's the area right before it goes into the filters. And we definitely need to get that fixed. Um, David and I have looked at it, um, it's gonna cost somewhere hopefully around seventy-five grand. Then we have the pre-settling basin wall, which just, just happened a few weeks ago. There was like where concrete meets to the joint to the, the building. It got water in it, it swelled out, it froze, it's pulled apart and we gotta get that fixed.
When we had the sub zero.
Yeah, yeah. And estimating about seventy-five grand to fix that. The next thing, uh, I'd like to hire two more water plant operators. Right now, we have been running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. My concern is at night. If one of those operators somehow fail or got hurt, there'd be nobody there finding them for hours. Cause they're there at night by themselves. And trust me, it would be easy to fall down some steps or even fall in the clear well or, I'm, I'm telling you, it'd be easy to do. But for safety reasons, I think it would be a good idea to hire two more operators. And me and Jeff have been looking into this program, I would actually like to have work studies to maybe help train the younger people that might be interested in like water or wastewater. But there's a program that might be able to pay for it, so we may not have to pay for it ourselves. Cause I'd like to have one at the wastewater plant and one at the water plant at least. Cause that's how I started out. I started out in a work study program at Maysville Community College and thirty years later, here I am. Um, before I move on, is there any questions about the water plant?
Is there been any more talk about putting the new one on top of the hill?
Yeah, yeah, that, um, once we get the preliminary engineering report completed by Kentucky Engineering Group, I'll submit that to Senator West. I've already talked to him and, uh, he's gonna present it to appropriations and revenue for the, for next year's budget, yes, for next year's budget.
Okay, uh, water distribution. Here in the last few weeks, I don't know if you've noticed, we've had some issues out on eleven. Well, there's one pump station that provides water to that way and that's Flemingsburg Pump Station. It's in bad shape. Really bad shape. We've had, of course, you know, the winter we had, well, all of the piping inside moved two inches. I know it don't sound like much, but when you have flange, de-flange, de-flange and pumps and valves and nineties and all that in there, that was quite a bit. So we had to dig out on the other side, on the inlet side, and there was a fitting luckily leaking and pulled all the piping back out. Well, when you're pulling pipe that's fifty years old and flanged, guess what happened? More leaks occurred inside the pump station. But that's fine, we can handle that and just, you just pretty much just change the gasket and bolt it all back together. But that piping is so old right now, it's in, just in bad shape. And when that flooded that last time, it ruined my motors, my pumps and everything. We still got that with the insurance, we ain't found, I haven't found out nothing about that.
We've got a claim in with, with, uh, with the League of Cities and this may be able to be.
So it, it, it leaked inside the house?
Yes.
Pump house? It blew out, I got a nice little video, you've got, did I show you, I showed you. But, yeah, it had about two and a half feet of water in it. But I think that was put in around nineteen ninety is when all that was put in. And I, it, it's just old, it's in bad shape. And to replace that, it's gonna be between half to a million dollars. Now, I don't know if we have to go to that extreme right now to go to replace it, but we really need to do some kinda work to it, it's, it's bad. But you can.
I know it's a lot of money, but my only concern is if you don't replace it, it, it's never gonna stop.
Right, it's, uh, you just Band-Aid and everything to a bullet wound, that's basically.
This year was the worst by far, correct, am I correct?
Do what now?
This year was the worst by far.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, and plus we have, we have three pumps in there, two of them pump about nine hundred gallons a minute and then we have the little one, which it's not gonna help. We used to use it back in the day before we had the double A tank just to charge a line after a main break. Basically, it only pumps four hundred gallons a minute, it's not gonna help supply water. And we recently just checked with Mays Lick and between January, we looked at the use in January to July. January, we're going through two, about two hundred and ninety thousand gallons a day. In July, it was what, five hundred? With a water tank, it's only, uh, two hundred thousand gallons. Or hundred fifty thousand. Uh, any, any question? But I do have a video of that leak if you wanna look at it. Uh, next, uh, a service truck. Right now, I, we have a GMC one-ton truck that we bought back, I think in seventeen or eighteen. It had a million miles on it and now it seems to go to limp mode all the time. I don't know if you're familiar what limp mode is, but the computer tells it has a problem and it won't go above, what?
Thirty?
Yeah. Twenty-five, thirty mile an hour. How many times that been done? How many times we had that looked at?
Several.
Yeah, I'd say seven, eight times probably.
So I would like to purchase a new truck. And it's only two-wheel drive too, and it's about around seventy. Um, Astera, uh, me and Matt have talked about that. We had that done and sure enough, it more than paid for itself. Um, it's kinda up to you all, but, um, I think it'd be handy. Uh, part-time labors, I don't know if you've noticed, the fire hydrants around here do not look real pretty. I would like to actually get either, if we can't do it this year, of course, I didn't put it in this past year's budget to do. Um, but maybe at least maybe next spring, we can hire two people to paint fire hydrants. Be seasonal. Uh, two places that I know in the distribution system, if we could replace lines, I would like to be able to do Lexington Street and Union Street. They are in rough shape. And there's another issue that me and Matt have talked about. Right now, where it goes underneath the, the railroad tracks, we've had to cap them off cause we can't fool with fixing the line underneath the railroad tracks. Cause it takes an act of Congress to fool with CX and CSX. Somehow I talked to George Terry, or George Terry, and he's supposed to be finding out, but if we don't get to fixing these and going underneath these crossings, we're eventually gonna run out of places for it to get water on the other side of the tracks. And I don't know how we're gonna come about it, but we're gonna do something. If we have to go and say there's an eight-inch line that's going underneath the tracks that was busted, we can go back, maybe slip a four-inch slide underneath of it. I don't, I don't know, I don't, the smallest line that you're supposed to be able to use to feed a fire hydrant is six-inch. And I, I'm telling you right now, four-inch ain't gonna do it. So we're still trying to find out information about that, see if we can do that.
Yeah, we, we slipped one under the track down there at my lower warehouse. Remember that?
What size was it, David? Uh, it had a sprinkler on it, so it was six-inch and we slipped a four-inch in it, yeah.
Matt, why can't we just go ahead and do it?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, we, like he said, we, we're, we're gonna have to get approval from CSX to go under the railroad to bore, to bore under there. Um, and you're, and he's been in discussion with George and it would just depend on what he would have in his budget right now. If George said, hey, yeah, you can go and do it today.
Is, are there existing lines there now?
Yes.
Just replacing?
Yes.
So why wouldn't they grant, I can't imagine they wouldn't grant us access to do that.
Well, I know there was an issue when we were trying to do that separation for the sewers.
Right.
And they wouldn't allow it then, so I don't know, I, like I said, I might have to find out more information.
George is a good guy, he's a local guy here and he'll work with us. Or he'll, he'll do his best to go up the chain to work with us.
Cause anytime you're within fifteen feet in those railroad tracks, you gotta have a, what do they call it? A person from CSX sitting there and they charge a thousand dollars an hour.
Close, ninety.
But, uh, Second Street, oh.
Yeah.
There is, uh, of course, you know, you know, we've replaced the main from the Eagles pretty much all the way down to KU. KU's workshop on Second Street.
That was what, nineteen or twenty when we did that one?
And then back in the late eighties, early nineties, the line from the water plant, right there in front of the water plant, it was Union Street all the way down to Ben's Gas Station was replaced. Well, that little section from Ben's Gas Station, back over here to Eagles, y'all see it going across the creek area, look. It's, it, it's in rough shape. And we need to get some kinda work done to figure out, I, I was throw the number of one point five. And we need to get some kind of work done to figure out, I, I was thought the number of one-point-five, one million to one-point-five million dollars to replace it. And I would've liked to took it around the vi- or the, towards the flood wall and went around like that, but I, from what I understand, that's gonna be impossible. It's gonna have to be taken across that creek, probably attached to the bridge.
You have a, a pump main, a distribution line there and then also a sewer line.
Yep.
So all three really need to get out of there.
Yes.
You're talking about those lines you can see?
Again, at the bottom, I got work studies to do, program which are kinda... Is there any questions?
About your sewer.
Okay, wastewater. First thing you see here, we got McDonald's tennis court, but I think it's supposed to be Mason County High School.
That's alright, Jeff.
But it's the sewer line that runs underneath sixty-eight there right beside the tennis court. It feeds or actually gets fed from both Wal- I call it both Walmarts. It was the first Walmart, second Walmart. All that flows down, it was put back in nineteen seventy-five before you even thought about Walmart. And right now, there's holes, we did video of it. There's holes in that cast iron line that runs under sixty-eight that you can actually see the casing pipe. It's in really bad shape. It needs to be replaced. So if we replace it, why not make it bigger? And put a bigger line in there because eventually, that's all gonna have to be increased. It's kinda, like I said, it was put back nineteen seventy-five and they, of course, they knew Walmart, they didn't know Walmart was gonna be built. And all that was gonna be put in there.
Is that the one where we had a citizen who, uh, called about it last year? Concern about the overflow?
Cause you probably can't see it from any of the homes there on North Shawnee, can you?
Well, what happened? You may be right, we did actually have the school, well, it was getting, there was things getting clogged up in them holes and it was causing the sewer to back up and it was overflowing there, a couple manholes down towards the junior high. So we had some issues, but we've had like three or four issues in the past year with that. The Bobcat equipment acquisition, uh, right now, we have what we call PAA, parasitic acid to use to disinfect the water before we discharge it into the river. Right now, they came in totes and it weighs about twenty-three hundred pounds every time we get a new tote. We, we use that to replace the chlorine. Remember that? Right now, we're using a backhoe with forks that's stuck on the front bucket that the backhoe is twenty-nine years old. I remember we bought that back in nineteen ninety-six. And it's really becoming unsafe to use. So what I'd like to have is a Bobcat down there that we can use for that and also use it on the drying beds. Of course, the opening to the drying beds down there, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're not real wide. So we need something that can fit in there and turn instead of, remember Joe Eches used to have an old Ford tractor in there? And I remember him just struggling back in and out there and get out. But I would like to be able to have something like that. Uh, return sludge pump. A return sludge pump is what happens after it goes through like the main clarifier where you add air to it and you get your bugs going and blah, blah, blah. And it goes over the weir- well, you have what you call return sludge, it gets from one part of the plant and it's returned back to the front of the plant. Well, it's gotta be like, you know what a grinder pump is? It's kind of what that is, it's a big super duper grinder pump and it just throws it back into the front of the plant. The Cadillac of pumps was around sixty grand, a little bit under. So I need those, and they haven't been replaced in twenty-five years, according to Luke, you're on. The SCADA system, it really, right now, we have a lot on our water side, but we don't have much on the sewer side, on our stations. And when they go down, what happens? It goes to the river. We are out of compliance when that goes to the river. We can get fined, we get NOV'd, but it really needs to be upgraded somewhere. It's gonna cost around ten grand per station. So that's, that's a rough estimate, by the way, very rough. We've been running two, we just got a new, um, well, I won't call it new, what's it been, about four or five years ago? Put that building in down there? And we keep a lot of equipment in there, plus the, the back truck. And we really need to insulate it, keep it heated, so we can keep, take better care of our equipment. We can help keep the camera truck in there, we just paid a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a camera that we could help put in there and help keep it. But also have other stations that could probably do like the new, uh, Helena Road Pump Station. It needs to be sprayed and insulated. And we got the building at the reservoir that probably needs it too. So that's why I put forty grand in. And I think it's work study program. Is there any question?
What do you do with the sludge after this process?
At the sewer plant?
Yeah.
It goes to the landfill.
Landfill, okay.
And right now, they take care of it for free.
You guys have any, I'm sorry, no, no, you, you're fine? Y'all have any other questions for the, for the group here? Okay, um, real quick, I'm just gonna give you-
Can I ask a quick question? I mean, I'd really like to get these fire hydrants started this year. I don't know if I can, I don't think I-
Let's look at your budget right now and see what we might be able to squeeze out of that to get some of those.
We got nine hundred fire hydrants.
I'll stab this and you don't have to consider it, but I think when I was in the Boy Scouts, you know, we'd been in the seventies or eighties, I think we had a project of helping the fire department paint fire hydrants. And I think, I think we were gonna do it according to what the pressure of fire hydrant was, maybe lower pressure was gonna be one color, higher pressure was gonna be another color. And then the day we were supposed to start, they called it off and didn't do it, but I bet they were volunteer groups.
Maybe we should just switch it to the fire department. Yeah, the tail.
We'll see what we can find out. Okay. I am very thankful that before he left, Joseph set me up very well with, uh, with spreadsheets to go through on every single budget, general fund, utilities, everything. And what I plan on doing is going through each department with the department head and going line by line just to see if there's anything we need to adjust before I give you all your booklet. But just at the high level, don't freak out when I, when I say this, um, and I'll explain. But at this point, we'd be looking at about a thirteen-point-three million dollar deficit. Now, what is included in that is you just heard from, with the exception of Darren, this is general fund, with the exception of Darren, from, from David and Chief and Chief and Luke, you heard about two-point-four million in capital requests, which are in there. That also includes in there four-point-two million dollars for the Mayslick water line. That's not gonna be, obviously, that's not gonna be completed in this year. We'll pay for the engineering in this year, so we'll have another, what, three-point-eight million roughly for next year. That also includes his one million dollar fire truck, two-point-one, two-point-one million dollar transfer to utilities and one-point-one million in broadband. So that adds up to roughly ten-point-eight million dollars. So if you took all that out and we didn't do any of that stuff, that leaves you of a, a deficit of two-point-five million dollars. But I've still got to go through everything with, with each one of these guys in here just to make sure everything is, is set to where it needs to be. Obviously, we know we've got to make a, an absolute priority with water distribution and all that stuff, we know that. Just to kinda give you an idea, we would anticipate, uh, let's see, we, next year, we would anticipate roughly two and a half million dollars in revenue from the water department with three-point-seven million dollars in expenses. So that's why you're seeing a little over two million dollars being transferred from the city to cover their operating and capital expenditures. Sewer department, it's sewer, sewer's fine. We raised sewer rates ten years ago because we had to to get KIA funding. Sewer's looking at about a hundred thousand dollar surplus if everything played out. So we, we, we have a, we have a lot we need to think about. I hope to sit down with everybody in here very, very soon cause I really wanna get you your, your booklet so you can start going through that. But my next question, question, last question would be, how do you all wanna proceed moving forward with our sessions? Do you wanna focus on one department at a time or how would you, how would you, like, give me your feedback and I'll, I'll help set all this stuff up so we can move forward? What would you guys like to do? You wanna sit there and go with one, one department? And what I'd also love for you all to do when you have time, sit down with the department head and kinda go on, go on through their budget with them, uh, before we sit down and meet. I would love for all of you to do that, just set up a time and sit down with each one. So if that's the case, then why don't we, um, at our April tenth regular meeting, let's set up, you know, either, either before, during, after, however you all wanna do it, to have at least one department right there to, to go through. What, take a little more time to go through than what we did with that. And focus a little more and that's, that's gonna give me a little more time to get everything else to you. How's that sound? Sound good?
Just to clarify, so you're saying that without any of the capital improvement projects that we heard about today, we're still operating in the red?
Yes.
So our income is not taking care of our expenses?
Yes, we would still be at a, again, that take, that, it could be, it could be less than that because you've got some grants, well, no, actually it wouldn't because you're gonna have an in and an out with the grant. So yeah, I would say it's pretty close to probably two and a half million in an operating loss. It's not gonna be two and a half million because you have fluctuations on, um, employment and things like that. We're never, well, I would love for us to always be fully staffed, but we're never gonna be fully staffed. So there's some savings in, right there, but yes, just from what I can tell at this point, two and a half million. That may change, as I sit down with each one of them, we might be able to, to whittle, whittle a little bit of those, some of those numbers down. And, and, you know, we'll dig in deeper into other things as well. You guys have anything else you need to, play good? Well, I appreciate you all's time this afternoon and, uh, we'll set up, uh, we'll set up a budget workshop for the next meeting.
Commissioner, do you all have any other questions?
Any other questions? Good? Okay.
Motion to adjourn for a second?
Mr. Brammer?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtmelt?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all.